Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, October 8th, City Council Work Session Meeting. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to the City Manager to talk about the Newport News Housing Study. Before we get to that, talking to Councilman Long, we're going to add a little bit more time. I know there's been a lot of discussion about the housing studies, so their request was made to have a little bit of time, so don't worry, we'll adjust accordingly on the fly. Over to the City Manager. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. The Newport News Housing Study began after an RFP was issued in April 2023. As a result, the city selected Urban Partners LLC to conduct the study. A steering committee was formed to provide guidance and monitor progress. The study analyzes the city's current housing inventory, assesses availability and affordability, examines demographics, and estimates demand for new housing. Based on these findings, the study provides recommendations and a strategy to address both short-term and long-term housing needs. At this time, I would like to introduce Sheila McAllister, Director of Planning, who will kick off the presentation.
Well, I'd just like to introduce our consultant, Urban Partners. Isaac will start with the presentation. And, oh, sorry.
Just for the people who are listening.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Well, we have two speakers today, and Isaac will start the presentation, and then his partner.
Chris Langkennell.
Okay.
Yes.
Will complete the presentation?
Yes, we'll go back and forth a little bit. Thank you so much. My name is Isaac Kwan, or Principal of Urban Partners. Joining me is Chris Langkennell, co-partners. We are, we've been a two-headed monster in most of our projects, including this. So much so that we synchronized clothing without even talking about it. It has been a pleasure to work with the City of Newport News, especially the planning staff, with Sheila Flora and Terry, especially. We want to thank you for that. Thank you for Councilman Long, for his participation and leadership in the steering committee. With that, I would like to present four key findings that we discovered through our quantitative analysis, as well as a lot of interactions with the public. Key finding number one, Newport News is not keeping pace with this share of the regional population growth. So the region is growing, however, Newport News is lagging behind. So as an older urban city, the city, Newport News, has lagged behind the rural suburban peers. From 2010 to 2020, the population grew modestly at just 3.1% and projected to increase by 6,000 residents by 2050. So basically, the 3% growth is forecasted to keep steady until 2050. And between 2017 and 21, the city saw a net negative household migration. And though the recent data has stabilized a little bit, is a little improvement, but nonetheless, I think there's a continued loss of residents and households throughout the years. And furthermore, the new households that are coming into Newport News compared to those that are leaving are 11%, 12% lower than those moving out. So it's a key understanding for us. And so I'm going to turn it over to Chris a little bit, and then I'll take over after that as well.
We just want to mix it up, so we're not boring everyone too much. The second key finding is that the city benefits from significant current and emerging opportunities for expanding the housing market, despite some of that decline that Isaac had mentioned. By 2050, you're going to need 21,000 new housing units to accommodate the growth and to replace some of your aging housing stock that's going to need to be, you know, rehabbed or actually replaced. But also, another advantage is your workforce, 100,000 civilian workers. So attracting them to live locally, as opposed to living in some of your surrounding communities, is really an immediate opportunity to add to the housing market growth. And of course, military housing is steady in the city, but you've got a lot of other job sectors growing, Jefferson Labs, for example, you know, your high-tech job growth as well. So lots of opportunities to expand that market. On the other hand, the affordability issue, it's not just the cost of housing, it's also incomes we're finding. So despite the fact that the city's got relatively affordable prices, if you look at national median house prices, the incomes of folks are really affecting their ability to afford housing here. When you look at your income-restricted units, 1 in 4 of your rental units in the city is income-restricted. That's over 8,000 units. So while Newport News is only 13% of the region's population, you have 22% of the income supply, the supplied income-restricted housing in the region. So you've got a larger share of income-restricted housing than your population. The thought is that building more of that income-restricted housing isn't necessarily the solution to the housing challenges. The concern is that it'll, building more will attract more folks from the region, not necessarily Newport News, and just kind of compound the affordability problem. So we think a more balanced approach, where you're combining market rate housing, preserving your affordable housing. We don't want any of it to go away, we want to keep it, but combining that with market rate development, and also making sure that the job growth continues, so salaries keep increasing, and the folks who live here can afford housing as well. And then our last key finding, you know, the city's doing a very good job, we think, with its flexible zoning and capturing some of its redevelopment opportunities as it is. You know, it offers a pretty diverse housing stock. You've got single-family townhomes, multifamily apartments. So if someone's looking for a specific type of home, Newport News really does fit the bill. You've got several zoning districts that allow for some interesting housing opportunities in terms of affordability, mixed use, but at the same time, it preserves some of your traditional aesthetic that Newport News is known for. Your now narrow, traditional narrow lots are a little bit of a challenge for redevelopment. You've got, you know, parking would be a challenge on the site, so you've got to rely on street parking in some cases, so that could be somewhat of a complication with redevelopment of some of the traditional areas in the southeast part of the city. But there are some opportunities we see in some of the underutilized sites throughout the city, especially your large, formerly commercial areas that were, you know, underutilized malls or large parking lots. Those have strong, we think, potential for future mixed use, including residential. So now, we're going to transition to what we're calling a toolbox. I will hand it over to Isaac, but the four themes that this toolbox covers is redevelopment and revitalization, policy and planning, affordability and accessibility, and partnership and collaboration. So those are the key themes. Isaac will get a little into more detail on those.
Thank you. So let's start with number one, redevelopment and revitalization. So the first idea that we put forth is to investigate the feasibility of creating municipal land bank to rehabilitate and reappropriate the vacant, abandoned, potentially taxed-for-exposed properties. And there are many, many examples in many communities that have used land banks as an acquisition and redevelopment and repackaging tool to make sure that some of the properties that are dilapidated, vacant, are troubled, are not falling into this repair, but actually circulated back into the housing market. We think that it'll be a worthy tool to investigate, whether that makes sense here or not. Next bullet, we think that downtown, where we, where we are, have a lot of potential to be redeveloped as a vibrant, walkable, mixed-use neighborhood. Perhaps that's a competitive advantage for Newport News compared to your rural and suburban communities that don't have that. So kind of leaning into that, leaning into the history of what used to be here that may not exist anymore, I think that's an opportunity for redevelopment. And certainly, the small waterfront access could be an asset, as well as surface parking lots, you know, I think having the shipyard, et cetera, I think that could all play into a potential strategy. Next idea in this theme is to leverage resources for the city's economic authority and other means to acquire struggling or failed shopping centers for redevelopment into mixed-use communities. Again, this is an example where we can do, point to a lot of case studies where these formerly big boxes that are no longer really competitive in today's market, for one reason or another, can be reused into a mixed-use residential, entertainment, commercial kind of opportunities. So I think that's actually an issue, but also an opportunity as well for Newport News. And lastly, the encouragement of development into, for the smaller, narrow lots. It is a challenge, but we think that creativity and creative ideas at the planning department, as well as the private sector in terms of design, can collaborate into an exciting way to re-envision that community, particularly in the southwest, where the homes are really narrow. It is a challenge to rebuild on those lots, because there's simply no room for driveway and et cetera, but I think there are different toolkits that we can utilize to incentivize redevelopment in those, on those blocks. Second theme is policy and planning. So this speaks more about the principles, about how you would want to approach. We think establishing a housing framework that promotes higher-density development patterns that will yield the greatest fiscal benefit per acre would be a good strategy for you to pursue. So instead of kind of looking at development just in terms of like typology of homes, kind of looking at it from the sense of like, how much yield would that give to the city? How much tax benefit? How much community benefit? I think it would be a good framework to work from. And constructing a right-sized home, what we found in our analysis is that newer homes are getting bigger and bigger and bigger, and that's one of the challenges of affordability. Homes are getting bigger, therefore, per square foot, they're not more expensive, but simply because they're bigger, they're more expensive, therefore more exclusionary. So building homes that are 1,500 to 1,800 square foot could be the right size. You know, that could go either way in terms of the range, but certainly, those homes are not able to come to market right now, in today's market, because of costs, et cetera. But certainly, we think that there's a greater growing market for those homes at those sizes. Next, Chris mentioned the homes that are needed, 21,000 units to be built by 2050, 700 units per year. I believe the trends have been less than half of that in terms of production for Newport News, so it does mean almost doubling or more units per year. So it takes an incredible amount of energy to get there. So there's a lot of ample room to grow in terms of the housing market. So we think any kind of production of all types, from smaller homes to rentals to middle-income, higher-income, you're short on everything. So I think that's the takeaway for that. Next idea is to support zoning and land use modifications. That would encourage the building of some of these housing typologies. So reassessing some of the ordinances, zoning, land use, really taking a hat on like, what does that do for housing production? Does it limit or encourage production? I think that would be a good metric to kind of think about as you're analyzing. This is a big one, actually, conducting a preliminary feasibility for a housing trust fund. This is a mechanism which you can actually have internally-funded mechanism to support some of your housing objectives, notably affordable housing and workforce housing development. Recognizing that federal funds, CDVG, home funds, even the state funds, it's simply not enough to meet the needs. So housing trust funds have been used all across the country to locally support housing initiatives. So investigating a feasibility of that, I think would be a worthy goal for Newport News. Two more to go. For building accessibility, simply put, this is an audacious goal to reduce the barriers to first-time homebuyers. They're simply, current market, they're simply not able to penetrate into the housing market right now. But to the extent that that could be alleviated through down payment assistance, renovation loans, et cetera, et cetera, all hands-on-deck kind of an approach to assist first-time homebuyers would be something to look at. And the second goal is to collaborate, to Chris's point of preservation of existing income-restricted affordable housing, collaborating with different agencies, state agencies, private, public, nonprofit development, to keep what you have secure for the future. I think in some communities that are developing, some of those roll off of compliance, and they cause a lot of issues, both in terms of affordability, but also in terms of maintenance. When some of those come off of compliance, they're not maintained very well, and they're just, they're communities that have really suffered because of that. So I think you want to have a, have a, put a hat on and say, what are we going to do for that property? That property, have a plan for each property. Last, I'm going really fast, last toolbox theme of partnership collaboration. So as we gather the stakeholders during the study, we recognize that there's a lot of capital that could be leveraged together if your partners work together. So we thought, there's 100,000 jobs, many big institutions and private employers, et cetera, education institutions. If you were to leverage that partnership into an employer-assisted housing program, it would be to the benefit of the employers to have a pool of labor of employees living close and stabilizing, you know, the market for labor, but also really provide and strengthen the community in which they're located. So we have many examples that we can point to in terms of employer-assisted housing programs, more than just referring people to Realtors and a modest level of grants, but there's robust ways that employers can get involved, I believe, we believe. And the next one is to participate in roundtable discussions. So it could be an annual, biannual. The stakeholders that were gathered for the housing study, perhaps more, perhaps less, we'll see, but just regular meeting and discussions about housing issues and challenges, I think would be a very important and ongoing conversation that would be beneficial to the goals that we're talking about. Last two here, two ways in which we think practically can assist is to start a small local residential developer. So many in the community can and aspire to go into housing development, but there are barriers of entry for that. So if there's a mentorship program, some larger home builders mentoring small, local, minority businesses, individuals to come alongside and learn the practice, there's simply nationwide, and certainly in Virginia, Newport News as well, there's simply not enough entities and individuals doing construction. I think that's a fact, and that's something that could come alongside all the things that we're talking about to assist in our goals. Lastly, just partnering with service providers, knowing that a lot of homes in Newport News are aging and need continual reinvestment. So having programs for home improvement, home improvement grants, especially those for seniors that want to stay and age in place, well, we asked in the survey, many of those homes are not suitable for long-term aging in place. So those are vulnerable populations that could be affected, some kind of home improvement program and a robust, you know, partnership between nonprofit, city, I think some of that's already happening, but to expand, that would be a good idea as well. So with that, I believe we're done. And the next steps that we outlined, as working with the planning staff, is we see the next step as going from a planning commission, city council adoption, and then we think monitoring whatever steps that is approved for implementation is a very important goal. And then the housing market, in this study, we think is a living document that needs to be revisited every regular basis. So every five years, that we think, having, refreshing the data, reassembling the stakeholders and thinking, thinking about what have we done, what do we need to do? Is the five, is the housing market the same five years ago? I think those things need to happen regularly, so that's it.
I'll take it from here. So I know there's going to be a lot, so one, just wanted to say thank you, you guys can stay up here if you want to, but just thank you for taking the time to do this. I know there's been a lot of energy around what we can do as a city to look at our housing stock, and one is to thank Councilman Long, as well, as well as the entire planning department and rest of the staff. Is there any questions from City Council before I turn it over to Councilman Long? So any questions from City Council?
Quick question. This study, it took into account the Troy's Neighborhood Project, correct? And then it regards to how about housing on Fort Utesis?
Fort Utesis? Yeah, we spoke before Utesis and the level of kind of the housing demand that the fort, as well as other military communities around the region are generating, so it's a consistent marker. We have a section that describes the kind of need that the military community is asserting to the city. We think that it's a challenge, because it's actually the Ford market that's so tight, the housing is not available, that's compressing it even more. However, if you want to continue to grow, you know, 700 units per year, that is a market demand that is already, is consistently available to the city. So we think it's both ways.
Can I use your mic, Councilman Long? As you were talking about the income-based housing, did you make a difference between what is with our Newport News redevelopment and housing authority, and what, how does, how does the private developers who are using the low-income tax credits?
Yes.
Factor in with this?
Yeah, those are inclusive of the housing authority, private tax credit, low-income housing tax credit, there's also HUD-funded, you know, multifamily for disabled, and also for seniors, those are all part of what we're calling income-restricted, so you have to qualify for that. So that's all included in that number.
Okay.
AD300 units.
Thank you.
Councilman Long?
Thank you, Chris, and Isaac, and planning staff for putting this study together. Just kind of give you all background, it started back in September, there was a steering committee that was formed, which included Fort Utesis, Langley, CNU, bankers, developers, real estate agents, that helped out with, and also in-us, like HR cap, that helped out with the steering, with the study. So really, to make sure that this study becomes actual living document, not just something that sits on a shelf, we really need to start thinking about some of the policies that could be implemented. One of them being the housing trust fund feasibility study, I think we should move forward on taking a look at how that could be effective. There have been a lot of communities across the country, and I know Chris mentioned it, that have been effective of aligning their policy up with resources that are available from different entities. So that's one thing I'm. Sure, I know Charlotte has had one since the early 2000s, and they've, they've added about 13,000 units to their, to their roles. This has been 20 years in the making. There's other ones, Detroit, St. Louis, some, some to name, Chris probably had some more, but there are, there are some cities across the country that have implemented. The key thing is, is that we have to make sure we have a clear, defined vision of what our housing policies are, and then line that up with a housing trust fund, resources that be made available. So that way, we're not just having a housing trust fund, and then they have goals, and then our housing policy doesn't line up. So all that will work together, because then city staff, code, planning, development will all work towards what our city policies are, and the housing trust fund will be an additional mechanism for developers and investors to pull from, to actually develop the housing, and we talked about, it's like 21,000 units that need to be built between now and 2050. So that's the whole idea of a housing trust fund, is to have the resources available match where our city goes. That'll be the key.
Councilman Long, question, what's the timeline on this? I know we want to push on this quickly, I know there's, is it Maggie Walker in Richmond? Is that there?
Yeah, Maggie Walker, that's a community, community land trust, which I think could be one of the mechanisms out of a housing trust fund. But the main goal of the trust fund would be to set aside resources to hit some of our target goals. Community land trust could be one of those policies that we create, but we would have to join forces with actual agency that would manage that community land trust. But that's out in Richmond, and they've actually added a lot of homes to their, their roles through the community land trust. Now, with the community land trust also has a land bank, and that was one of the other things that the study mentioned, is to do a feasibility on the land bank. So I think that's something City Council really needs to think about moving forward on a feasibility study. I think something like this would may take three to six months to really tackle. That allows us also, as a council, to start looking at the study, it's a long document, but start looking at the study and seeing where we want to take the city, what, what policies or strategies the study has created or suggested to us as moving forward.
And talking to Mayor Stony, this is not just like a one-year investment, it's a multi-year investment, and so I just want to make sure I support it, you know, 1,000%. But as we continue to move forward, it's not just a one-time injection of cash, like it really is a long-term strategy. And I know if you, did you want to say anything, ma'am? Okay. Anything on this? Mr. Manager?
No, I can't tell if this is really working all that well, so bear with me. This has been one of those strategic priorities for this community. We've talked about it for a number of years, planning department has really been doing everything that they can to assist with, you know, a long-term vision for assisting this community with our housing needs. I have to say, this study was very instrumental, pulling a number of stakeholders together, pulling council's vision for improvements to the community together, and bundling those things in one comprehensive package. So I think from a policy guidance standpoint, the work that's gone into producing this document, the process that we've undertaken. document, the process that we've undertaken puts the community in a very good position to start making some real solid decisions that are not only policy-backed, but consistent with our annual operating budget and other processes that we will begin to undertake. These recommendations can be rolled forward into those practices and into those documents. So, I just want to thank everyone for their engagement, for their involvement in this effort. I do think it lays a very solid roadmap for the council and the community and those stakeholders to pursue going forward. And I think my only point of clarification is the timing around your interest. I understand your interest is strong, it's been expressed throughout the duration of this process, to look at the trust fund, to look at the land bank. Is it your desire that staff moves forward and starts putting together proposals to bring back to you while you push this document forward to the Planning Commission? Ultimately, it'll come back to you in your evening addition, in your evening council package for adoption some weeks from now. So, we can certainly move forward with some exploration of these two programs while you're completing the public approval process, if that's your desire.
Yeah, that will be the desire, and I'd like to work alongside with the Planning Department to move forward with the housing feasibility study, Housing Trust Fund feasibility and the land bank as well.
I concur. And Councilman Long, do you want to talk about, I know there's a housing symposium coming up, might be a good opportunity to bring that up.
That's good. I was going to mention it, comments tonight, we're actually having a housing symposium that's going to be at CNU Gaines Theater. It's taking place on Friday, the 25th, and Saturday, the 26th. The 26th is the opportunity for residents, homeowners, people that are interested in buying a home, renters, people that are interested in renting apartment, to come out, and there'll be workshops set aside for those different people. This is the opportunity also, if, to talk about some of this stuff that's in this housing study, so that our residents are aware of it. Realtors are going to be there on a Friday night, so this is also another opportunity for Realtors to know that we have some real plans and really boosting homeownership or homes in the city of Newport News. So, we have the registrations on the planning's website, 12 to 4 o'clock on that Saturday at CNU Gaines Theater. If you don't get the register, still come out. I know that's not what the planning wants to hear, but I wanted to make sure that our residents are able to come out and learn about how they can be successful in whatever housing status they are in, if it be homeownership or rental living.
Okay. Any further questions or comments from City Council?
All I'll say is that I support this for sure. Thank you, Councilman Long, for running point on this. Being familiar with the land bank in Detroit and in Richmond, I think it's a great opportunity for a number of reasons, but the blight specifically, helping us address that. So, thank you.
Well, I think the land, not on the land bank, but I was really excited to be able to see, looking at the smaller-sized lots that I've brought up several times, because I do think there's an opportunity there for affordability. I know the parking could be an issue, but maybe we can look at that, because are we looking at people who have lower incomes that may not have, you know, three and four vehicles? And so, we could possibly make that work. Or look at, in the southeast community, looking at that alley that was divided between those properties and seeing if we could, you know, do the back door of the house as opposed to just looking at all street. So, I will be interested in, you know, being a part or giving my input to see if we can actually make that happen.
And the last thing I would say is, I think all of this goes hand-in-hand. We have a reduction of parking minimums, right? We're going to start, I think next is to build housing on church land, and the third thing is, we already approve ADUs. So, the way I look at it, it's like a stool, right? These are the three legs. I think additional leg would be how we can look at the land bank and the land trust. So, let's do it for the city manager for action. Let's have some co-eds come back, and we'll see you at the symposium.
Okay, thanks. Hopefully, council can be there full force.
We'll be there.
All right.
Next up on the agenda, we have the 2025 state legislative priorities. I'll turn over to City Manager. Thank you.
Annually, in preparation for the upcoming General Assembly, the city administration develops a legislative package that outlines requests for changes to state code, budget amendment proposals, and policy position statements. At this time, Jerry Wilson, intergovernmental affairs manager, will walk us through the proposed 2025 list of state legislative priorities.
25th and 26th. The 26th is October.
Good evening.
I'm going to start with a little bit about the session. The session is... Sorry, thank you. A little bit about the session. This is not a budget session. There should be amendments only. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean there won't be a lot of amendments, it just means that we're not starting from scratch with the budget. Prefiling of bills began July 15th. Interestingly, though, there have only been four days when bills have actually been filed so far, and that could be in part because there is a new system, or there's a new legislative information system that they've just rolled out, or it could just be, everybody's busy. The House will be capping bills this year at 15 per member, and the Senate will be capping bills at 20 per member, which means that, in theory, we'll have at least 2,300 bills. The session starts on January the 8th, it's 45 days. We should adjourn, all things going as planned, on February 22nd, which is Saturday. And then, all of the House members are up for election next year, so since they cannot fundraise while they are in session, it could mean that we're going to have a on-time session. We have several new things in the package this year. Our first one is a legislative request on the statutory fee cap for vacant buildings. State code sets the cap at $100 with additional fines and fees for if you don't register as you are supposed to. In consultation with several of the folks from our codes department, that $100 is not even close to what it would take to enforce a vacant building registration program, because there are some real advantages to having a vacant building registration program to include opportunities for economic development or redevelopment, and, you know, concern about properties that are blighted and perhaps being used inappropriately. In discussions with some of the members of our delegation, there is a will to see if we cannot have the statutory cap raised. What that will actually be raised to is really up to the delegate in terms of what they're willing to ask for. So, we'll be kind of continuing to work on that, but right now, the goal is just to ask for an increase. The second request would be to amend multiple sections of the code to allow special conservatives of the peace or technicians trained by the locality to review video and photo images that are captured from the various speeding cameras, red light cameras, school bus cameras. Right now, a law enforcement officer reviews that footage, and the time that that takes and the number of officers that are required to do that kind of reduces the manpower available for patrol. This would give us an opportunity to have other folks who are not law enforcement officers but who are trained, to be able to review the footage and determine if people should get the ticket. This also could be an opportunity for retired law enforcement. Some of our sister cities are looking at that as a way that they could use retired law enforcement to do this and allow current law enforcement officers to be in whatever their area of specialization is. The next request is a budget request, and it has to do with a program called the Safer Communities Grant Program. The Safer Communities Grant Program is a violence reduction and prevention program that awards grants to cities to help them support holistic approaches to violence prevention. Currently, there are four cities that are eligible to receive this grant, Norfolk, Portsmouth, Richmond, and last, this past session, they added Roanoke. We are not on that list. So, following the pattern of adding Roanoke, we are asking to be included in this program with a corresponding $2.5 million increase in the program budget. The next request is to create a military-centered community zone grant program. This past session, the General Assembly, at the bequest of one of our own delegates, Senator Rouse from Virginia Beach, created a military-centered community grant incentive program, which allows us to give local economic development incentives to businesses that locate in areas that are densely populated, or in our case, perhaps not populated, or we have a large population of military downtown, although we don't have an installation. So, this would be a force multiplier for the local incentives to allow us to, whatever the city's doing, the state could also put in some sort of an incentive grant. The ask for this would be for the state to commit $5 million for a matching incentive. The next session, section is policy positions, and the first two are new, and then a few of these have been slightly tweaked. The first one is a request that the state provide funding to offset mandated exemptions from real estate and personal property taxes. As you all know, real estate is one of the biggest revenue sources for every locality, probably followed by personal property taxes. And in the past several years, the state has been granting exemptions from those taxes for certain categories of individuals. And regardless of the worthiness or the category, those things have started to add up. So, for the city of Newport News, in the last, there are two. There's one is the tax year and one is the fiscal year. So, we're looking at real estate taxes over a fiscal year and real property over the calendar year. So, we have lost, no, lost, foregone, I guess, is the word, $6.2 million in real estate revenue and $1.7 million in personal property tax revenue. And so, the request would be that the state would put in some funding to backfill that. The second request has to do with our juvenile detention facility. Last year, in the budget that passed, the state convened a work group to look at downsizing juvenile detention facilities. They wanted to consolidate and eliminate, as a potential cost savings measure, juvenile detention facilities, which, interestingly enough, as you probably know, the localities contribute much more to the detention facility support than the state does money-wise. But there was no real discussion about bringing the localities to the table as part of the stakeholder group. And so, along with Virginia Municipal League, we're supporting the idea that if you're going to look at closing detention facilities, you need to have all the stakeholders at the table, you know, especially the localities that host and financially support them. Also, there is a lot of research that shows that kids who are in detention facilities close to their families, where they're from, do much better, they have higher resiliency factors, and so, the idea to consolidate strictly for funding and not with the consideration of the negative impacts on the children who are involved, needs to be taken into consideration. The third policy statement is a oldie but a goodie. Every year, we do the machinery and tools and B-Pole taxes. We collected 27 million in machinery and tools last year and 23 in B-Pole, and so, the corresponding increase to our real estate tax rate, should those go away, would be 24 cents on the real estate tax rate. I know council does not want to vote to raise the real estate rate by 24 cents. The next one is funding for the military-centered community zone or community infrastructure grant program. We were successful, this past session, the state added $3 million. They had initially funded that with $5 million, of which Newport News kind of got the bulk of it for projects. It's used to match other federal loans, DoD, I mean, grants. So, this year, we're asking that they fund that at the $5 million level again, and also consider the possibility to make that, instead of a matching program, that you use the money to match other grants, to make it a standalone program. So, if there are smaller projects that could be accomplished within the funding, that we would be able to do that without having to have another grant to match. The next position has to do with school construction and modernization. It includes the continued request that the state give us the authority to enact additional taxes to support school construction, but it also kind of amps up the request that the state put maximum amount of resources towards this. You know, some of you may have heard at one point over the last couple of months that there was a fairly significant surplus in state revenues, and I think there was a lot of folks who were saying, where can, what can we do with it? Well, we have a billion-dollar backlog in schools that need to be rebuilt. The next one is, again, an oldie but a goodie, opposing unfunded mandates. The next is supporting economic development incentive programs, of which our city is one of the biggest users, particularly things like the Enterprise Zone Program. We did add language to this section on behalf of the Alliance to support any project that they might bring forward for workforce development initiatives. The next is supporting community violence intervention and public safety. Then we have a statement on supporting municipal park rangers, 911 operators, animal control officers, to be on the list of employees who qualify for hazardous duty retirement benefits. That's also carried over from last year. The next one is somewhat new, although we have consistently had some sort of policy supporting funding for transit. This year, on behalf of HRT, we're asking for the state to look at the policies around sustainable funding for transit, particularly that there is a funding formula that bases the funding for transit on their performance compared to a cohort, but there's not necessarily, if you look at how that falls out, HRT doesn't necessarily compare well, and there are a lot of factors that are considered for performance funding that are really out of their control. So, we're asking both for sustainable funding and also policies that would continue sustainable funding for transit. The next one is supporting increased funding for road maintenance for port host cities. In 2006, we had $1 million to share among all the port host cities for road maintenance, and today, in 2024, we have $1 million to share among all the port host cities. The next statement is to preserve the local authority in terms of short-term rentals in the event that that becomes an issue again this year. And then, the final statement in the package this year in positions is supporting the Hampton Newport News Community Services Board, as they have multiple requests that have to do with behavioral health, supporting funding, and also creating a pipeline for workforce development for people who work at the community service board. So, that is the package. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Long?
Since this is not a budget year, and it's only amendments, have you heard of any persons interested in lowering the amount of money the state has set aside for child subsidy, for childcare?
I have not.
Okay. Just keep an eye on that, because that's a really important issue, to make sure funding stays intact for childcare subsidies for families.
And finally, real quick before, there are a bunch of things going on between now and January. As many of you know, next week will be at VML, they will have their Legislative Committee meeting on Sunday. There are a lot of interim General Assembly meetings going on, J-Lark Housing Commission, Committee on Technology and Science, those kinds of things. There are the Governor's Transportation Conferences coming up. Probably the biggie that you would want to be like the note in the, is the money committees will meet on December 18th, which is where the governor will present his amendments to the budget.
And I just got one thing.
Councilman Wade?
I see you have support, I see we have support for Hampton Newport News Community Services Board. Is that because of the increase in mental health issues, or is that something the executive director actually requested?
That was their request. We have always put in our, I would say, blanket statement that we support their legislative agenda as one of our stakeholder partners, but this year, they specifically asked us to highlight a few of their very urgent needs. For example, completing the rollout of the Virginia Step Program, adding a 12.5% to the budget for substance abuse and the workforce pipeline. So, this is a little more specific than we have been in the past.
Okay.
Real quick, Jerry, as always, thank you. What I am very, very interested in is the School Construction Fund, and making sure we're doing everything in our power to make sure that continues and that the state will help us for what we got going or coming to us in the future. So, whatever you need, let me know.
Will do.
All right.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? I think we're good. Thank you, Jerry. I think we're wrapping up. We have comments, ideas, and suggestions. We'll start on that side of the room.
I do have a motion in regards to our VML travel now, or?
I'll take care of it.
All right, then I have nothing.
No comment.
I just want to thank the city staff for the Fall Festival. I had the opportunity to attend the Fall Festival, and it was just incredible to see so many families from all over the Hampton Roads area take advantage of that festival. So, great job, city staff, was well-respected. That's all, Mr. Mayor. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. Nothing. Nothing.
Okay, I'll wrap up. So, three quick items. So I understand, I know that there is a VML conference in Virginia Beach, and I know that we just redid the entire travel policy. So I think it's, you know, in order to have an overnight, it has to be with greater than 50 miles. I think currently, it's like 42 miles, so we need to vote as a body to waive that for this time. I think it's more than appropriate. I'm excited for what all of you are going to learn at VML. I wish I could make it, but I will not be able to attend as well as in National League of Cities. Hopefully Tampa, you know, I know right now, they have, there's a hurricane that's hitting there, so thoughts and prayers to the mayor and council down there, but I do think this is appropriate for this. So I move that the council of the city of Newport News authorize an exception to the travel policy to authorize overnight travel for the members that are going. For any city council members attending the VML annual conference being held from October 13th to October 15th in Virginia Beach.
Segued.
Moved and segmented. Just call a roll.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Dick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Thank you. And then just two more additional items. So from what I'm tracking from staff, we're still unable to get, if you remember, if you recall from the last council meeting, Ms. Gloria came up about her theater program. That's the one that Councilman, Councilwoman Sharon Scott always used to sponsor. Were unable to come to a consensus on like, what's the proper amount? So we're going to talk after this and figure out whatever the amount is, we should let her know tonight. So offline, we'll talk about that as well. We'll pass around, City Fest is the big Newport News and Hampton Festival that's going to be happening soon. So we'll have, Tiffany will pass that out to everyone post this meeting, and then we'll vote on it in two weeks, and then that should be settled. Is there anything else that I'm not tracking?
Yeah, is all pro dads been?
Yeah, that's in there.
You have a statement. You have a statement.
Okay, all right. So we'll, and also, we'll make sure, I think we're doing a pretty good job, but we'll make sure there's enough time, and so also think it's just, let's follow up with the request individually. So I'll call, I'll call Sharon after this, as well as Reiman for the, for City Fest. That's all I have. Did I miss anything from City Council? Alan, you're good? Okay. You have something? Yeah.
I just want to take a minute or two to thank Assistant City Manager Beau Clayton, my staff, and this council for allowing me to attend the ICMA Annual Conference this year, September 21st through the 25th. And that, as always, when you, when you have a number of practitioners from across the country, even, even some countries outside of the U.S., it's a wonderful forum for learning, for sharing stories. This is essentially for city managers, county administrators, town managers, the equivalent of the council's National League of Cities Conference. So we're, we're, you know, going to the exhibit hall, we're going to concurrent sessions, we're taking tours of significant projects in the community. This year, the conference was in Pittsburgh, and so for me, that was a learning environment to begin with, because I've really not been to Pittsburgh since, since I was a child. So Pittsburgh has a lot to showcase and be proud of, and it was very, very obvious from my interaction in the downtown and throughout the community. I wanted to touch briefly on some areas that I had an opportunity to really think about. I think the staff was very pleased when I actually misplaced my phone and they didn't hear it from me for a day and a half or so. It took a little breather. But I started with a micro certification course to strengthen listening and leadership practices with elected officials. So we're really talking about how to engage elected officials with strategic thinking, with forging partnerships, and with our collective job of stakeholder management. And then some of the concurrent sessions that really stood out to me, and I think in some cases, Newport News is really doing an excellent job, maybe even to the point that we are a leader in Hampton Roads. But certainly, one area is expanding my management practice around how data and citizen engagement can build trust and strengthen local government. So, you know, there are two areas to really practice this over the next funding cycle. One is using citizen engagement to support the annual operating budget. The city council's already asked me to explore a number of practices and bring those forward as part of the budget adoption process this year. So we have been thinking, and the conference allowed me to further some of my, my thoughts in this area. So you will see the results of my participation. The other, of course, is with strategic planning. So you have an annual, you have a five-year strategic plan, 2020 through 2025, and I would imagine, and I would certainly encourage and work with you, to start a new, organic, citizen-driven strategic plan to pick up and represent the work that you want to carry forward over the next several years. You know, with regard, again, to the annual operating budget, furthering my practices and knowledge around non-traditional methods to rethink our approach to the annual operating budget, a number of communities are doing some interesting out-of-the-box kinds of, practices when it comes to building their budget, and so it was an opportunity for me to drill down in a couple of key areas and see some, some successes from other, from other communities. And this is an area where I think we are truly a leader. I would say that the biggest theme, the biggest takeaway for me from this conference was understanding the rapid rate of absorption that local governments are using artificial intelligence and innovation to address routine tasks that improve productivity in the workplace. Everything from chatbots to avatars that speak multiple languages, if you are a community that consists of multiple residents that speak different languages, come from different backgrounds, even the completion of routine forms and reports. One community from California has a process now where they completely generate all of the standard background forms in each one of your council packages from an AI engine based on all the public documents that have been approved and loaded into the search engine. They can essentially fill out the form with a couple of key, a couple of key words, and the work is done. You know, saving people, not replacing jobs, but saving people hours and hours and hours a week, just in, you know, by avoiding the replication of routine and mundane tasks. And then finally, an area that all of you have spoken to and an area that I'm learning about is broadening my awareness of social media in what I would call the evolution of city communications. So that, that is everything from finding your voice to having a specific message, responding to comments, and particularly the use of social media to supplement emergency management practices. Everybody is saying now that, you know, in their communities, they don't, they don't really schedule all of those updates about emergency management and crisis incidents as they unfold, because the pace and the rate at which information is changing while that incident is occurring is best addressed by social media and then, you know, sporadically using press, press engagements. So, so those were a few areas in terms of management practices that I was really able to glean from as a result of going, and again, I just wanted to thank you for allowing me to attend.
No, that's great.
Back to this comment, I'm really excited about how we can utilize AI. I know I sent you AI, a system for code enforcement. I don't know if you had a chance to look at that, but I recall when I was in NLC, Atlanta had used, they were using code enforcement AI cameras to kind of look around and see different areas, and I saw where some, a city out in West Coast actually had implemented that program. But I think AI would be a great tool for us to utilize to do tasks, and in this case, I guess a camera rides on the back of a city car, and it just kind of sees what code enforcement violations are out there, would just tackle those, those areas. So I'm really excited about if we can implement some AI functionality here in the city of Newport News.
Yeah. You, I, I think we shared this report with you. Over the summer, you know, we, we had a lot of intense work, really that began in the spring, continued through the summer through our Office on Innovation, involving all of our department directors, all of our operations were, were really put on the table, and there were a number of high priority projects that came to the top of the list for us to really be able to focus our Office on Innovation personnel and skillsets around figuring out. And so we have a very good list that we're working through, and I would say that what, what people truly don't understand is the power of data, right? You, and you have to have the staff in place in order to be able to make the connection between isolated databases and where that data is occurring in your organization, be able to create the, the language to communicate with that data and use it to drive decision-making. And so I am continually asking our office staff in the Office of Innovation, what do they need to do their job better? And the recent request that's come from me is that we need a data manager, and I said that I'll make that happen. So, you know, we are investing in the city's future by rethinking the way in which we work, and I'm convinced that that's going to have long-term dividends on, on, on our position and on our productivity. And truly, if you're not using AI to enhance the way that you're thinking and working, you're falling behind, not only in the business world, but, you know, in, in the local government workplace as well.
Anything else from City Council? I have no close session, so with that, we stand adjourned. Thank you.